This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call to order the March 18th, 2024 regular council meeting to order 7:00 PM. All right, for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight? Okay, anyone like to make a motion?
Move to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilor Ash.
Councilor Norman?
Aye.
Councilor Wagner?
Aye.
Mayor Holbert?
Aye.
Councilor Ash?
Aye.
Councilor Webb?
Aye.
Thank you. Any presentations tonight? No. Well, moving right into the mayor's report. It's my honor this month of March to recognize the citizens of the month. And I have selected Mike Grant. And Mike is here with his wife, Michelle. Glad you could make it, Mike.
She had me cleaning the brush barn.
I met Mike about five years ago. And we took on a project of clearing the brush there at the lake entrance and made it look really nice on the highway. And Mike was a big part of that with his, all his equipment. And he did it strictly volunteer. And it turned out really good. And I've been really good friends with him ever since. I used to work on a tree crew at West Oregon Electric. And that's what Mike's done most of his life. So we had a lot in common. He's removed just about in every city park we have, a danger tree or two. One of the big projects that I want to recognize Mike for was the salvage of the walnut tree in Spencer Park. So, I mean, I think your last tree removal was on top of Orbeumire Park, Mike. And you climbed 180 feet to take that fir down. So that was quite a job, so.
You know, my psych therapist has never figured out what's on my.
But anyway, thank you for all the, all the things you. Oh, I also want to add that they have a wonderful nursery at their house. And they've donated many plants to the senior center and to the city also. And thank you again. And I hear there's another batch coming soon.
You have another batch coming.
Good. So, anyway, I want to recognize you and thank you again, Mike, for all you've done.
Thank you. It worked for me. Awesome.
Thank you guys for your service.
Thank you. Very much appreciated.
I'm still trying to do some of that.
Well.
I'm just gonna keep walking along as I can, you know? I've never been a quiver, so.
No.
Anything else comes up, let me know.
Okay.
I'll be there.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Michelle.
Also, committee meeting reports. I have one from March 8th, 2024 at the senior center. Pretty good meeting. As far as bargains on Bridge Street, they had a pretty slow month due to illness and weather. Of course, that's changed now. Kelly Jarman resigned. She was helping out with the senior fitness classes. She was on the payroll, but she resigned last month. I think, let's see, Sandy and Sandy Welch and another gal are kind of.
Margaret? Is Margaret helping?
I don't know if Margaret's back. She left for a while. But anyway, they, they still hold their classes. One of the questions came up, and you were there with Five Star that morning, was what's the extent of the warranty on the building, Josette?
For like what?
Oh, for general maintenance or?
So for the contractor?
Yeah.
It's already passed. So that's typically a one year and then a three year for specific things. But those have passed now. For their responsibility for it. Is there something that came up or?
Not, no, just general.
Okay.
Like the one, the issue with the hot water heater?
Yes.
Still under warranty?
Well, that was a manufacturer defect. So the manufacturer gave us a brand new $7,000 instant hot water heater.
Cool, yeah.
So we just had to pay the Five Star the installation of the new water heater.
So everything, all the warranties are passed then?
Yeah.
Okay.
For like, yeah.
And for the month of February, they served their most meals ever, 583 meals. That's pretty good, so. Again, thank you to Randy Holtz for his funding to purchase the other Venetia blinds that were put in the cafeteria. So that's about it. Next meeting's April 12th. Okay, no other meetings to report? Any topics on the floor tonight? Okay, consent agenda for acceptance, park committee meeting minutes for January 2024.
I move to approve the consent agenda for acceptance.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded.
Mayor Holbert?
Aye.
Councilor Ash?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilor Wagner?
Aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda for approval, city council meeting minutes for February 5th, 2024. City council meeting minutes for March 4th, 2024. Any discussion or questions? Okay. Any motion?
I'll move to approve the cassette agenda for approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Norman.
Councilor Webb?
Aye.
Councilor Norman?
Aye.
Councilor Wagner?
I can approve, even though I wasn't here for one of them.
All you're doing is passing a motion or participating in passing a motion that you believe that is a true account of what happened.
Yeah.
That I weren't there.
So, so approved.
Mayor Holbert?
Aye.
Councilor Ash?
Aye.
I got everyone right.
Yeah.
Motion carried.
I'm not saying it twice.
Thank you. Any unfinished business tonight?
No, sorry.
I'm gonna move forward and for a record.
Don't jinx it.
Angie's here.
I'm gonna talk forever. You guys know how I'd like to go on and on.
Okay, any new business? Okay, thank you. Business from the departments, moving right along. Organizations' resolutions, Resolution 2024 dash 01, adopting a supplemental budget. And I'll turn it over to Angie.
All right, I'll just mention that. So I don't know, you guys read through the staff report. We just have a few, few changes that I needed to make. The biggest one is the, in the general fund, we sold the chargers. So I need to put that money in the budget. And then we paid off the old lease that was for those. And then also paid our first payment on the new vehicle that we still are waiting for. And he bought the little Ford Explorer. So there was a bunch of things that weren't in. We knew they were happening before July 1st, but we'd already passed the budget. So housekeeping stuff there. The only other really big change is I had to add, I added $20,000 professional services line item in admin fund. That's mostly for engineering fees. We've got a lot of money going out and we're having kind of a difficult time getting some of it recouped at the moment. So we're waiting on that. It will happen. I just didn't want it to be upside down. And then in cemetery, I went ahead and added the income that we've received so far this year, which is almost $30,000, well, a little over $30,000. Most of it just went into contingency. I did increase a few. I had to increase zero to, it's like 1950 for insurance to, that portion of the cemetery employee. Wrote the budget. There wasn't a lot of room in there. So we were kind of paying for more of that out of admin. But since there's the revenue there now, I'm gonna book some of that to the cemetery. And then in parks, the big one is for the grant that we received for the design of the lake campground. So the In-N-Out for that and then just a few other minor adjustments to make things come out to the positive. Any questions?
No.
So the phone one was because we anticipated being on Gorge Net?
Oh, yeah. We weren't.
Alvin, so.
Well, yeah, we're still waiting. It's been a slog to try to get that. I don't know why, why, well, part of it was the change in, I think, their whole.
Ownership.
Yes, they, they're, they're really big now. They, they bought out a bunch of smaller things or something. So they're under a bigger parent company. So the people that we're dealing with now weren't the ones that made the promises. And so they're trying to uphold those promises. It's just taking longer. So he did contact me last week and we're, we should be getting the new phones in the next, I'm hoping within the next month. And then we'll be able to completely get rid of Zipley and save. I mean, it's gonna cost, we're gonna be paying more than the $300 a month that we're paying now with Gorge Net with the new phone system. But it'll be about half of what we're paying Zipley just to have phones. So we will see some savings, but.
So next year's budget will be good.
Yeah. And I have started working on that, you know, it's my favorite, so.
How many of the, I believe 48 niches are available still? Is that a bad question or?
Well, only because I don't, I, had you asked me earlier, I could have brought the answer.
Sorry, Jos.
I want to say we're probably a third.
Okay.
Of the total. The backside, I think, only has one person in it.
Oh, so it's not a time to look.
Not yet. You usually get to 51%.
Right.
Then you start the next haul. Because that, you'll have collected enough fees that if you're smart with them, you'll be able to pay for the next one, right? With half of the haul.
To know where we're at now.
Yeah. I can get, I can email you guys that. Sounds like big Ben brain.
I don't have any other questions. Does anyone else have?
Nope.
Okay.
Yeah, I need a resolution, Mr. Rind. I'll move that we adopt resolution number 2024-1. Resolution of the city of Vernonia, Oregon, adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year 2023-2024.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilor Wagner.
Councilor Wagner?
Aye.
Councilor Ash?
Aye.
Councilor Norman?
Aye.
Mayor Holbert?
Aye.
Councilor Webb?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Very good. Any correspondence? City admin report?
Okay, so I talked to, in regards to the old dump, I talked to Mitch. He said we'd end up having an electrician's bill because a lot of those wires are pretty chewed through. So it'd be someone kind of undoing, breaking it down. He's like, I don't know, do we want to outlay the cash or do we just wait for them to do the thing? And I said, well, if we hit July and they still haven't come out and tested it, then we outlay the cash maybe. I don't know. Unless council is adamant that we pay for the fix of the pump. The other reason I kind of don't want to fix it is it's probably never gonna be used in that spot again. So that's why I'm holding off, giving DQ a little bit more time to see if they can make it happen for the testing. We're still finally, I know that Brett Now or Oil came out last week to help give Jeff the seal coat pricing. We're still trying to obtain at least a company we can send. Even if they give us no response, we have to at least try and get three companies to give us a bid. So we're sending it to the other two, but we haven't got a response yet. The DOT grant still out, ADA project, there hasn't been any update from ODOT for us other than I did get the packets. I didn't get a chance to look through them of the appraisals and the pay. So I gotta kind of go through that, send it to Ruben, make sure everything looks good before we sign anything for ODOT to pay us for their temporary impermanent easements along the highway in the city limit. So the SOQ for grant, or grant administration has concluded. That was a notice of intent to award was sent to Columbia Pacific Economic Development District, or COALPAC. And then we'll send them the notice of, of award and sign contracts with them. And then the other thing that's happening with that grant is the environmental review is currently published for public notice. It's here if anyone ever wants to come look at it. And once our period closes, then the state has it posted at their offices and publicly till April 10th for comment from anybody in the state. And then once that's done, we can actually ask for reimbursement of funds because our contract's done and every, all our projects passed all the muster. We're still working on a few other requirements that are required before we can request reimbursement. So that's pictures that we post, the fair housing resolutions in the windows, scheduling the fair housing activity up at the school that I told you guys about where I'm gonna go teach the classes about it. So we still have a little bit to do there. And then our bid docs are just waiting for final review from Ruben. Jeremy hasn't commented on them.
Yep.
And then we're gonna kind of put out a blast, an announcement to let contractors in the area know from the city's website that, hey, we're gonna be opening up a construction project, you know, be looking on the outlook for it. You can't just individually tell them. You kind of have to group tell them. And then we can, we can send them a packet once it's out. You can send it to one, people you're interested in having bid it, but it has to be everybody kind of all the same with CDBG. The agreement for the completion of the Lakeview Sewer Project has been signed. Mr. Lark was, as of the date of this report, was not back from his vacation. And so we didn't get on the schedule yet, but I'm hoping this week we'll get a scheduled date for that project. The manhole project, OXPO's put in four eight-hour days so far. They're averaging about four to five manholes a day. And Public Works is starting to see a slight difference in the amount of time the pumps are running after a heavy rain inundation. And they're hoping that that just continues to make a difference. The statement of qualifications for the city planner closed on April 29th. And then notice of intent to award was sent out to the winning firm, which is Lower Columbia Engineering. And the new planner will be named Erica Smith.
April 29th?
Yeah.
She means February.
No, it closed. Oh, February, sorry, February. Sorry, you were, I didn't, wasn't following what you were saying. February 29th, thanks. Our new planner is Erica Smith. The 10-day contest period ends March 18th, as the other one said. And the notice of award will go out and sign the services contract. City Hall staff is very excited to have a planner back on. DQ upcoming permit, so Ruben last week had a meeting with an attorney to, a regulatory attorney to discuss the issues. I had sent him the old permit, the new permit, and kind of a narrative of how it all went down. And I haven't heard back from him today on how that meeting went. So waiting to hear and then potentially there'll be something coming to council, whether or not we want to engage in this, with this person. Kind of, you can see what they've done in the past, what their rates would be. And then you guys would decide if that's something. Or if there's a smaller version where they can come in and assist us in making our case. Maybe not take it right to the legal level if that's not what you want to do. So we'll just have to have that discussion when we get more information. Electrical projects, I'm meeting with Blake to discuss the list. I finally took him off there. I said, Blake, you're making me look like an idiot that we still haven't got the entrance sign dealt with. What in the heck? So I said, I just listed the projects and I said, we need to meet in person because this stuff has to get done by the end of the month. It's been way too long. So he is coming back tomorrow to start working on some of the items. And so hopefully we'll have all the electrical things done. The other thing I want to mention to you guys is that today we did the offer of employment to Officer Schultz. He's the lateral transfer from Portland. He'll have a council swearing in on the April 1st meeting, probably pinned by his family. And so he was sent out to get uniforms because he's not an extra large. And that's all of the uniform we had, so. Yeah, so you'll start seeing him around. He is a lateral transfer for everything but was not able in Portland to complete his FTEP. So he will have some field training exercises, a little bit of that binder that still needs to be completed. Which is good because it'll give our officers a chance to see him in action before he's out on his own. Do you guys have any questions for me?
And our other officer's in, is he in class?
Yeah, he's been in since January. So I think he's a May, I can, when I email you how many spots in the Collebarium are full, I'll email you the date that Ratliff, Ratliff is out of a academy.
To have a full police staffing, it's been rare for us for.
I know, yeah.
Knock on wood.
And so then just the upcoming meetings are, the April 1st meeting, we do have the quarterly eval and priority work session on the 8th. Then we have a council meeting on the 15th. And don't forget, the city county dinner hosted by Vernonia is April 30th.
I will not be here on the 8th. I know.
Okay.
It's not the annual, right?
On the 8th?
No, it's just a quarterly. Yeah, it's not a review, review. It's priority update.
And then did anything come out of us sending you availability last?
I am going to take the April 15th meeting and make it a special meeting instead. To make it happen, so.
Since you guys were already planning on being here.
Yeah, it's just gonna be.
Easier.
Yeah. Best way to make it happen, so. I'm probably gonna ask you to hold it a little bit earlier, but we'll see as we get closer. 6:00 or 6:30 if possible.
I prefer.
Yeah.
The special meeting will be on the?
On the 15th.
15th, okay.
Yeah, and I've already talked to Councilor Wagner. She's the one who gets to have citizens of the month next month. And she's fine with holding it or awarding it in May, right?
Or earlier.
In May.
Or earlier.
You can do April 1st if you want.
I could do April 1st. It'll depend on the person who is being recommended.
That's true. Yes, so she's okay with it. I already checked.
And then what is the, when is the first?
Not till May.
It's the first Tuesday in May.
We're just gonna have to one this year, right?
We have to have two and then done.
You have to hand it to them. Yes, that's true. Okay, I'll have to. That's the one I meant.
I will miss the second one.
The first one doesn't count.
And then check your email from Stephanie, your SEI statements are due by April 15th, so.
Hit me to the punch this year, so you guys should already have emails from them. I didn't even get to give you guys a heads up first.
Why does it have to be Tax Day? Like, whose idea of fun is that?
I know, right?
File it on.
Anything else for Josette? Thank you, Josette. Questions from the mayor and councils. I only have, oh, go ahead.
Let's be aware that we have like two minutes before your record won't be broken. Just saying.
You said it, Ruben.
What's the record?
I think 28 minutes, but we started a minute and a half late, so you have like two minutes.
I only have one and it won't take long, but. Portland Adventist has closed down three clinics in the state of Oregon recently. One in Lincoln City, one in Welchess, and another in Sheridan. And just to dispel any rumors about our health center here, we're in good shape. We have plenty of providers. That's the biggest reason for the shutdown is lack of providers. And they've been struggling and struggling. It's a big problem all over the United States. But anyway, our clinic here is a missions, mission clinic, actually. And because we're almost an hour away from, from better services hospitals, that's why they'll remain, keep it open. And we're kind of like a, a good clinic here. So no, no rumors are closing, yeah.
Okay.
Wanted to dispel that, so. That's all I have. Dale?
I'm gonna ruin it for you. Had the high school Friday, they put in another 69 trees along Webway, tubed them up. I planted, we, I swear those bags had more than 100 trees in them. I don't know what the deal was, but.
I don't think so, but.
It was the smallest one of the bunch. And so I was planting like crazy on Saturday when everybody else was planting on the river. And then I went back and tubed some today. And fortunately, when I drove up there next to the lagoons, one whole row of all my trees were, all the tubes were off. So Sergeant Carnahan came down and we did find some footprints he took pictures of. Might be a little bit definitive for somebody and.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know. He, last I knew, he was gonna go have a talk or see if the person was around where I told you where their camp. I didn't hear disposition.
There's definitely a camp.
Oh, yeah.
He left his business card.
Oh, okay.
Going back to meet up with the person again.
Yeah.
And then I contacted our legal because I want to put environmentally sensitive area, do not come in here. And then I want to be able to trespass people or ticket them if they are found in there. Because I'm tired of it. And it's a crop and if they want to mess with it, then they can get a ticket.
Yeah, it's unfortunate that comes to that. I mean, I know there's people that like to walk down there.
Yeah. But it seems like letting anyone in seems problematic because then the people that want to do nefarious things get in at the same time. Yeah.
So.
So till they're released into the world and don't need a tube, you don't need to walk down there.
Need to walk down there at this time. In a couple of years, trees will be up, tubes will be off.
It's a habitat restoration.
Yeah, we don't need people trouncing through. They can go around.
Yeah.
Maybe the deer will listen to.
Yeah, and it's really just, it's really just the people kind of cutting across. It's not people that come down to the wetlands to park there or do, it's the people that are using it as like travel.
Yeah, and live there.
Yeah.
So and then I think we're scheduled for April. The school's got some videographer that's wanting to do an article on safety classes and things they're doing. And so the instructors got them lined up. We're thinking, I've saved out 40 tubes or 20 tubes. They're a little mini, like they're actually really busy doing something. They're doing a little mini, like, they're actually really busy doing something for about 15, 20 minutes, and.
Yeah.
And, and we'll be done for everything down there, so.
All right.
Oh, dang.
Thank you for helping out with that, Dale. Glad we have a program that, at the district, it's been really important. Oh, anybody else?
Well, I missed out on helping Dale. It ended up with the, the hail and watershed helping them plant some trees this weekend along the riverbank. I think Dale would have been easier.
Probably.
Anybody else? Action item.
Okay, so I'm gonna email council the percentage of full niches in the Collibarium, and the end date expected for Officer Ratliff. Graduation date.
All right, thanks you all for being here tonight, and your participation all during this meeting at 7:32 PM.
Did I say that?
Spin on one couple of.